Everyone ready? Good evening to everyone. I'm declaring a quorum is present this evening, and this is the January 19th, 2016, Meeting of the Board of Education. And we have a very, and I'm calling it to order. Thank you. We have a very special guest with us this evening. Chloe Gitka, first grade student at Vester Elementary. And Chloe, if you'll come forward to the microphone and help us with the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Chloe, welcome. Would you like to tell us? Well, first of all, I think you have some special guests with you. Would you like to introduce your family? Little technical difficulty. We'll have it straightened out here in just a minute.
Talking to this one. Look at that. That's perfect for you. Right at your spots.
Excellent.
I brought mommy and her name is Amanda.
Hi mommy and daddy. And your little sister's name again?
Mia.
Mia. Hi Mia. Thank you for coming and supporting your sister. Chloe, would you like to tell us something about your day at Vester? Is there anything special that you'd like to do?
I like to read.
Excellent. That's great. What else about Vester? And I think you have another special person here with you tonight. Is the principal here with you? Would you like to introduce her?
Her name's Ms. Bactel.
It certainly is. Thank you very much for being here this evening. Okay. How about pets? Tell us something you really like to do. What's your passion?
Play fetch with my dog.
Excuse me?
Play fetch with my dog.
I love it. Excellent. Very good. Is there anything else you'd like us to know about you?
That my birthday's coming up.
Yay! Can you share the date?
March 14th.
And how old will you be on the 14th?
Seven.
Wow. Very exciting age. Thank you so much. Is there anything else? Okay. Thank you so much Chloe for coming. Always a great way to start the evening. Looking for an approval of the agenda.
Madam President, I move for the approval. The agenda is prepared by the Agenda Planning Committee.
Thank you. Dr. Harding's a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Any discussion on the agenda? All those in favor, please signify. Seven zero. Thank you. An approval of the minutes.
I move for approval of the minutes of the closed session held on Tuesday, January 5th, 2016.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Any questions or comments on the closed session minutes? All those in favor, please signify. That is seven zero. Any abstentions? Student abstains. Thank you. Second set of minutes.
I move for approval of the minutes of the business meeting held on Tuesday, January 5th, 2016.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Any discussion on the set of minutes, second set? All those in favor, please signify. Seven zero, and the student concurs. Thank you. And that brings us to public comment. We have two individuals signed up this evening. First is Charles Wagaman, Jr. Would you come forward, please? And Mr. Wagaman, before you begin, each person wishing to address the Board of Education may address any topic concerning the Washington County Public Schools, except personnel or student matters which clearly identify an individual or individuals. Each speaker is limited to three minutes of speaking for himself or herself, and five minutes if representing a group or organization. Following a speaker's presentation, the superintendent may designate a staff member to address those individuals' concerns, or may ask the speaker to contact a particular department or staff member at an appropriate time. With that, Mr. Wagaman, you're representing yourself or a group?
Well, I'm representing myself, but as an attorney, representing the public interest.
All right. So you will have three minutes to address the board.
I understand that.
Thank you, sir. Please proceed.
You should each have, at your seat, a packet like this. If you need others, or it's incomplete, please let me know. Good evening, President Breitman, and other members of the Washington County Board of Education, Dr. Wilcox, and the general public. My name is Charles Wagaman, Jr., a local attorney for the last 48 years. Many years ago, when I decided that I wanted to go to law school, my father, who was also an attorney, reminded me that if I did so, the privilege of practicing law carried with it the obligation to engage in public service on behalf of the general public. Examples of that service then being serving as a prosecutor, a state's attorney, which was then a part-time job, or serving in the General Assembly, or as a county commissioner. Not as a professional politician, but simply as a citizen who has been blessed with special skills and training, which will enable them to represent the public interest impartially. After being admitted to the practice of law, I committed myself to serving the public as a citizen legislator, but never as a professional politician, and I would not engage in money or power politics. I kept that pledge. Twelve years of public service in the 1970s and 80s resulted from that pledge. Now my legal career will soon end as retirement approaches, but the responsibility of and commitment to serving the general public remains. Recently, one of your budgetary processes has come to my attention, which I believe to be not only contrary to the principles and practice of good, open government, but also contrary to the applicable statutes of the state of Maryland, which govern this board's conduct. More importantly, that process is contrary to the interests of the general public whom you represent. Accordingly, I am here to ask you to agree to terminate the practice, comply with the statutory procedure, both now and for the future. You should be able to make that decision within the next 30 days, after due consideration and consultation with one another. By the way, I want to make it clear that I am not, and do not intend to be, a candidate for election to the Board of Education, or any other office, in the upcoming election cycle. Stated simply, the problem is straightforward and easily understood. This board is now in the process of preparing its fiscal year 2017 budget for approval. In budgetary terms, the current year is fiscal year 2016, and the previous year was fiscal year 2015. By law, the actual unliquidated surplus of local tax dollars or funds from the previous fiscal year, and the estimated surplus of such funds from the current fiscal year, is revenue for fiscal year 2017. Prior to fiscal year 2000, this board honored that statute and budgeted accordingly. But since then, and for the past 16 years, this board has failed to comply with that statutory requirement. Instead, this board has placed those surplus monies for the prior year and the current year in what it calls an unrestricted general fund balance. In March of 2013, the balance in that unrestricted fund was $12,500,000, and would now be over But in the interim, you've spent $5,500,000 for the purchase of this lovely building in which we are at present, as well as about $7,400,000 on its repair, remodeling, and improvement. Plus set aside $5 million as a contingency fund for, I'm quoting, downtown facilities, public-private partnerships, and technology. That total of $17,900,000 of local tax dollars was expended by you without the approval of the funding authority, that's the Washington County Commissioners. Yet you still have about $8,500,000 in your unrestricted fund, which I must assume you intend to eventually spend without placing those funds in a proposed formal budget for approval by the funding authority, again, that's the county commissioners, as required by law. As stated in the folder provided to you, you are dealing with these millions of dollars as an off-budget item, contrary to law, without the opportunity of the public's funding representatives to comment upon, approve, or reject your desired spending. Not only must you place those funds, must those funds be included in your annual fiscal year budget, but they cannot be expended or committed to pay for anything without being included in an approved budget, or part of an approved transfer within that budget.
Mr. Wagaman, we're running over three minutes. Could you bring your comments to conclusion?
I await your response as requested in my cover.
Perfect. Very good. Next signed up to speak is Jeff Farr. Good evening.
Good evening. I want to thank you for this opportunity, and I want to make sure that it's known that I'm speaking as an individual. I am a WCTA, Washington County Teachers Association, member. I'm also an employee of Washington County Public Schools, and as a county resident, I am one of those ephemeral but desirable groups known as a stakeholder. And I also want to note that I offer this as a plea, or a mea culpa, if you will, not as a prescription, or advice, or as a lecture. In one or several of these roles that I have, I have had friendly and productive and enlightening conversations with just about everybody I see up there, and with many of my cohorts and peers sitting behind me. For those of you who are not among that group, it's more likely my lack of effort than your willingness to do so. That being said, I am somewhat chagrined, and I consider that much of the recent public discourse reported among us seems to focus on how we do not or cannot seem to hold those sort of conversations when we are all assembled together in any one particular room. Allegedly, we devolve into machinations, dissembling, cabal-forming, or scheming and breaking into factions. I have at times been part of the clamor rather than the solution, and in retrospect, that is a source of some regret and of much learning. I truly believe that we're all better than that here in Washington County. For when I look about this room, I see no one here that is not here because of that student three desks back, the one who's just beginning to believe that the rest of us believe in all the possibilities that exist for someone who is learning how to learn. So reports to the contrary, I don't want a teacher block on the Board of Education. I don't want a confederation, a cabal, or any sort of faction. A block is a complacency-shrouded exercise in proving what we can do instead of doing what we should or ought to. I do want people that I work with and that I work for, who are open to examining possibilities, options, and opinions, and then voting their conscience, or at least their best guess, as what might be the best for our students. Advocacy need not be adversarial. It should enliven the debate. It should allow us to examine all the possible facets, and then prove that the conflation of our disparate parts is greater than our separate whole. To that end, I, and I suppose many others, willingly pledge my service in any way that might prove efficacious. I personally pledge to diligently counteract those that would divide us along rather than resolve us among our differences. I pledge to seek and listen to the better angels of our nature, and to set aside the ranker that can so easily beset us and be absent, excuse us, and be about the business of what we all want to do best, exploring those possibilities found gleaming in the eye of that student three rows back. If you'll just look back and wait a bit, I hope to catch up with you. The very best of us already ahead of me on that path. I appreciate the opportunity to speak and for your good service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farr. Have a good evening. Those are the only two individuals who signed up. Is there anyone here who would like to come forward and speak to the board this evening? Seeing none, we will move on with the agenda. Is there any board member who would like to give a response to the public comments that were made? Seeing none, we have no unfinished business this evening, so that takes us to new business. Mr. South, you're handling the consideration of our single item purchase.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Madam President, Mr. Superintendent, members of the board. This evening, I am here in Mrs. Freeman's absence. She has lost her father-in-law, and therefore is out of the office on bereavement. I'm requesting approval of the professional design services for security improvements at various schools. We included a detailed discussion of the proposed projects in your packet over the weekend, and at this time, I'm requesting the board's approval to award the architectural services for these projects to Crabtree, Roarball, and Associates for $51,922.80. Dr. Michael and I are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. South. Motion is required for this action item?
Madam President, move to approve the quotation proposal for professional design services, RFQ number 2016-35 to Crabtree, Roarball, and Associates, at a quoted price of $51,922.80.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Second? Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Any questions or comments on this item?
I have a question. Just so the funds for this particular transaction are from the general fund. The security improvements that are anticipated and that are being designed through this process, the funds for those improvements, are they from the capital budget, or are those coming from our operating budget?
The funds for the design are coming from the general fund. As you pointed out, the funds for the construction of the projects has not been identified at this time. If they are completed, it would come from either the general fund or through some other mechanism, but not capital funds.
There's nothing in the capital budget identified, either from the county or otherwise, for these particular projects?
That's correct.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mrs. Fisher?
When we have completed sometime in the future, the security devices for these six, I believe it's six schools, do you happen to know how many schools will be left that still need alterations for security?
I think we'd have about a dozen schools left that we'd have to do some work at to actually create a vestibule or a window-type pass-through. Most of those are middle schools and high schools, and if you think about those schools, one that you're very familiar with, Clear Spring High School, a great deal of distance between the front door and the office area. The majority of that space is used for cross-corridor traffic of students, and that's really the challenge that we have in our middle schools and high schools. How do you create? We could create a vestibule, but we couldn't create a vestibule that would allow you to come directly into the office, which is the ideal mechanism that we'd really like to create. So we have quite a bit of challenges as we look at some of those. We also have design work out right now for Boonsboro Middle School. Very similar situation, two potentially main doors, but the office is back in the middle of the building. To really do that right, and part of the design that we're working on right now would be to move a large portion of the office and health suite near the front of the building. We just can't do that everywhere, and it's also very expensive. So those are the types of things we're looking at to try to enhance security. We will continue to work on security as long as schools exist, I'm sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Additional questions? Mrs. Harshman.
When you mentioned Clear Spring, you aren't thinking of taking out the red circle, are you?
No. I don't have any plans. It's not on our list right now.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Seeing no further questions. All those in favor of this, please signify. Seven zero, and student concurs. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That takes us to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. There are three items in the superintendent's report this evening. Before I introduce the actual speakers who are going to deliver it, I do want to bring to the community's attention and to the board's attention that recently, I received a letter dated January 12th of 2016 from Earl Stoner, who is the county's health officer, informing us that they would no longer be able to provide the inspection services which certify our kitchens and dining facilities, absent a significant charge. Last year, we had 128 of these inspections. This year, they are looking to assess a fee of $150 for each of them. While it is appropriate that we consider it now because we're building our budgets, it's also, I think, appropriate for us to reach out to the county health officer and ask him if there isn't the opportunity for some type of waiver from this fee. So I wanted to alert the board to the fact that over the next couple of days, I will be reaching out to Mr. Stoner and to his team to say that, you know, quite honestly, we understand the challenges of budgeting, but we also have some serious questions about how these fees would then impact our students, particularly our students who are paying for lunch, or our students who are on free and/or reduced-price lunches as we take these fees and charge them against those available fees. So we want to make sure that everybody understands the consequence of this fee, both from Mr. Stoner's perspective, as the county health officer, but also as a school system, and the responsibility that I have in building a budget for you. So I just want to bring that to your attention today. If you have any comment about the conversation I'm about to have, please don't hesitate to contact me, either individually or collectively at the table later in the evening. That brings me to the second item of the agenda, and I'm going to ask the student board member Erica Greenwald to introduce the balance of her team, but she is with the Washington County Association of Student Councils. And what they're going to be talking about is their recent direct experience with the PARK assessments. That's the Partnership for Assessment of Readiness for College and Careers assessment. So Erica, if you would introduce your team, and I believe you're going to take a seat down front and speak to the board.
President Breitman, Dr. Wilcox, members of the board. My name is Erica Greenwald. I am the student member of the Washington County Board of Education, and today I have brought two guests with me.
Hi, I'm Kaylee Adelsberger, junior at Williamsport High School, president of Washington County Association of Student Councils.
Hi, I'm William Keel, senior at North Houston High School, and I'm vice president of the Washington County Association of Student Councils.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and get started. As you guys may know, Washington County Association of Student Councils meets monthly in schools all around the county. At our general assemblies, we discuss a wide variety of topics regarding students and the Washington County Public School System. At this particular meeting, one of the items up for discussion was the PARK assessment. To collect this data, we separated middle and high schoolers, and then separated them into subgroups of about eight to 10 students. This presentation represents the combined feedback of middle and high schoolers. WCASC officer team members facilitated these discussions, and to get them started, we outlined questions that we wanted answered in every group. Some of these questions include, how did you feel you were prepared to take the PARK assessment? How does it compare to the MSA? How does it compare to what you learned in class? Did your teachers stress its importance? Is it or is it not fair to count as a graduation requirement? Students' answers to these questions will be embedded throughout the presentation. The feedback that was collected has been split up into three main categories: format of the test, technology, and content.
So for many of the students, for the first time they see the questions that require them to justify their answers, they are taking a high-stakes test. Many students were grateful that there will be more exposure to this type and rigor of testing. It was generally agreed upon that requiring justification significantly increases the rigor of the question. Many students felt that the assessment did not give them adequate time to formulate and write worthy responses for the questions asked. It was brought up multiple times in discussion that through the test files, it does teach on the spot of time management skills. Time management is a skill that students acquire when taking a test. Time management is a skill that students acquire when taking tests, standardized or not, and certainly is present in the PARC assessment. Many standardized tests have passages that are long slabs of reading that can easily become boring for students that are taking the test. Students greatly enjoyed the videos that were embedded in the test, the shorter, more significant readings, such as a court case, and that the passages were modern. Students also felt that the passages that were included were of a reasonable length, unlike most on other standardized tests such as SAT. Students noted that they felt that they were actually being tested on what they could do with the passage and how they could interpret it, not on if they could stick out a particularly tedious reading and then answer questions on it. Students felt that the directions that explained how to answer different types of questions were very clear, because the format of some of these questions had not been seen by parts of our student population before. Many were grateful that they were guided through the test. Many students conveyed that they were surprised at how minimal the breaks were. They wanted longer ones. Students were expected to test hours on end without a chance for a significant break in between. Many other high-stakes tests implement a couple long breaks, such as the AP test, or frequent short breaks, such as the SAT. Without a ton of time to plan a well-thought-out essay, a student's worst nightmare can be running out of words. Students felt that they were not given an adequate amount of words to write a strong essay in with the five-paragraph system we were taught, and this is a necessary thing for writing portion to get a strong essay out. Students agreed that the PARC schedule was incredibly disruptive for them, as well as their teachers. The schedule was disruptive to testing students because they had to miss a significant amount of class time, but it also was disruptive to non-testing students. Students feel that having to switch rooms and switch periods is a major hassle, but we do acknowledge that this concern will hopefully be obsolete if students do not have to take these tests in computer labs and instead are able to take them in their classrooms. From what we understand, this will eventually become common practice with the digital learning plan is implemented. This concern was a major one, and it's very exciting that it is to be rendered irrelevant with the digital learning plan.
Students were very nervous going into the test that they would be unable to use to take handwritten notes and were pleasantly surprised that they were able to. The balance that is achieved when giving hard copy tools and using technology is one that students seem to greatly appreciate. One problem that all students do face when taking online assessments is the possibility of glitches in testing programs. Students did not mention that the devices, whether it was a desktop or an iPad, were unreliable, but that the PARC software had problems during and after testing. Some students reported problems with logging in, and others said that they were unable to submit their test upon completion. Students noticed that only a fraction of teachers and guidance counselors that were serving as proctors knew how to fix these technological issues. Students also noted that 2015 was the first year of this assessment for us, and that hopefully this year and in years to come, the problems that occurred last year, technology-wise, will be fixed. Many students did not love that PARC is completed solely on a form of technology. Some students felt that there should be a paper and pen option for PARC because of our inexperience with online high-stakes assessments. Students made it very clear that their qualms came because of the lack of technology in previous tests and in other high-stakes testing. Students did not feel that the computerized test was the problem, but that there is a clear disconnect between how we are assessed and how we are assessed in the classroom and on other important assessments. At this time, high school students have only had experience with taking tests with a paper and pen. When students take other high-stakes testing, such as APs, IBs, SAT, and ACT, they use a pen and pencil. Students also take the majority of their in-class assessments, such as quizzes or benchmarks, using a paper and pen. Students who suggested a paper and pen option made it very clear that giving an alternative medium would absolutely be temporary. The logic behind the suggestion is that as time goes on, more students will be comfortable using technology due to the digital learning plan and will not need this option. Students also acknowledge that with the digital learning plan, many current norms will change. Students collectively hope that after the digital learning plan is implemented, online assessments will be frequently used in classrooms for practice.
Some students reported that in their in-class curriculum, they did not fully align to what the PARC testament was assessing. They also said that due to the content, they were very sympathetic that 2015 was the first year of the assessment, and that as time goes forward, they hope the in-class curriculum will match what the PARC was assessing. Students hope that as we begin to understand the PARC, and what it hopes to find is that students can align their strategies used in the classroom to how they are supposed to take the test. A prime example will be the justification of a question. Many students didn't have to experience this, especially in a test situation, until the PARC exam. Students felt that though this component was very foreign to them, they thought it was a good measure of understanding and agree that many of the changes to the test. They also want to see these changes to be continued to be implemented in the classroom to prepare them to take the PARC exam. Students believe that implementing the digital learning plan in a new way of assessing technology in elementary schools is highly commendable and should be taken seriously. However, students feel that as standards have changed, many of us were left out due to secondary education being postponed and pushed back from when these new standards would have been more helpful implemented as an elementary school student. We are very hopeful that when current elementary schoolers take their high school PARC exams that was unfamiliar to us, it will be second nature to them.
At this time, we can take any questions that you have.
Thank you. All right. Colleagues, questions? Very informative report.
Thank you all very much for the presentation. I stopped by the meeting the day that you were all doing this, and it was, I think, as you've indicated, very engaged students who, it was just great to see so many engaged students talking about learning and how we can do better, how they can do better, and about big-picture education things. So thank you for being the leaders and facilitating all that. Do you anticipate doing this kind of thing year after year? Or, I guess you may not be in charge of the organization next year, but do you think this is something that would be worth the Association of Students Councils doing in additional years, so that maybe some year down the road, we do find that, you know, it wasn't so bad, my elementary school prepared me for this? Or talk to me about where you see this going in the future.
We would certainly hope that this is something that would be continued, especially the idea of roundtables. At our last meeting in January, we did a similar setup with the roundtables for a program called Naviance. I know it's something that the Board has considered purchasing, and we basically had a presentation and then got feedback from students, and we really liked that setup, being able to present an idea and then receiving feedback. So I think certainly that model will continue to be used, and hopefully with PARC assessments and big, important things, that hopefully we will still be getting feedback as the years go on.
Perhaps a somewhat difficult question, but what, the people who are in charge of the digital learning plan are right behind you. You're welcome, Dr. Koenig. The, based on what the students experienced taking this assessment digitally, what advice would you give to the folks sitting behind you about the things that they should think about as they're implementing the digital learning plan, so that they will, I hesitate to say, make the kids better able to take the test? Because it's not about taking tests, but what are the skills that you think that the students need to learn through the digital learning plan that will help them both in their education, but also in terms of the assessments as they take them going forward? What advice would you give them?
The one skill that we saw was mostly justification of a question, but that doesn't really have as much to do with digital learning plan. But with digital learning plan, the advice to them would be just keep doing what you're doing and put iPads in the hands of students and get them comfortable with them and comfortable enough to take a high-stakes test on them. So to just implement them in classrooms and have teachers use the iPads to test students on, that would definitely be the biggest thing, is making sure you're still taking tests on iPads to prepare to take a test like PARC on one.
I didn't mean to cut you off if you had something.
I would also say that with the iPad specifically being an example and with the test, just the format of the test, getting the student used to that, because usually students, as we've said before on the SAT, it's used to being a paper and pencil test. So just the whole feel of the test, especially for students who maybe aren't comfortable taking tests or have test anxiety, that's definitely something that we've noticed. A lot of students, they just said they were hesitant, and they felt unsure of themselves because they didn't have something that they were used to. So whether it be iPads or computers or whatever devices they used to take the test, just something that they're more familiar with.
Familiarity will help them, you're saying? Yeah. I guess last question from me. I'm familiar with justify or explain your answer. Help me understand this justify or explain the question.
So on PARC, from what I understand from taking it, it would ask a question like, what is the tone of the passage? And it would be A, B, C, D, and you would select your answer, and then the next question would say, what quote supports this? So the questions are connected, so hypothetically, if you get the first one wrong, you're probably going to get the second one wrong. But the main thing was focusing on not, do you know the answer to the question, but why do you know that that's right?
Oh, I see.
And how you got there.
It is justifying the answer to, I follow you now. And that's pretty consistent across both the language and the mathematics, PARC assessments?
From what we understand, the two of us that have taken the PARC exam didn't have to take the math portion, but from the concerns that we did hear from the student, the justification part was tricky, because although it is taught in the classroom, this was the first situation that they have been tested on it, and in most situations, when you've been asked a question as such, you could pick the text support and then reason it out, whereas in this case, you only had five answer choices. So if how you justified it in your mind didn't match one of those five choices, it was a process of elimination to figure out the correct answer.
Right. Great, thank you.
Mr. Redenauer.
Yeah, excuse me. Yeah, just a quick question. Which devices or what were the devices that you got typically? Was it all iPads or was it, were there laptops or was there?
I took it on both a laptop and a desktop, but I know that some students also took it on an iPad.
Did you get a sense that those, the students that took it on an iPad, for example, had more difficulty or, you know, timing out because they might not have, you know, as good a feel of typing on an iPad as they would, you know, a keyboard, you know, laptop with a keyboard?
They do have keyboards attached.
Yeah, an iPad keyboard was provided.
No, they're a separate keypad.
Gotcha, okay. Okay. Is that going to be with all of the ones that we are?
Yes.
That's what I thought, but okay. Very good. Thank you.
Any final questions?
That's fine.
Perhaps just a comment?
Yes, sir.
So the key takeaways that I took from your report, and I actually had the good fortune to take a look at it over the weekend a little bit. Making sure that our curriculum is aligned to the assessments is a critical thing, and some of the students may have felt they got caught in the transition a bit. Making sure that the tech formats are familiar, so that you've had the experience, for example, with some of the, if you took the math, the graphing calculator that's on the iPad is similar to something that you've experienced before. And I think we're going to be able to address those two things easily in the next year. The one that's probably the hardest is the need that I think you identified, that we're going to have to change our instructional practices a little bit in the classroom so that the tasks that you're being asked to do on PARC and other high-stakes assessments are similar to tasks that you're being taught in the classrooms. And so that's going to require not only different behavior on the behalf of students, but of our teaching force and our administrative teams. So those are the three key takeaways. The other thing, I heard a couple of huffs up over here when you mentioned Naviance, and I do want to say that I was particularly excited when I went to your meeting last week, and you had the sales team from Naviance that was there showing all of the students in the room something that the school district was getting ready to recommend for purchase. That might have been one of the first times that I've ever seen that happen, where students were actually helping us to make a decision as to the functionality, the usability, and in fact, the value that a software package might have. So thank you for that. The last thing I want to mention is this, is that you've all mentioned the paper, pencil, and the SAT, ACT, and perhaps Accuplacer, depending on where you're going. All of those are moving to an electronic format, and I don't think you'll see any more paper, pencil after about 2018. Unfortunately, you're caught as the young guinea pigs in this thing, so thank you for helping us to see our way through it. But those people who are sitting behind you are going to see more and more using digital tools as opposed to the traditional tools that those of us sitting around this table, with the exception of you, Erica, have had to use. So thank you for your report.
One question, whoever wants to answer. Will there be another year of paper and pencil option?
I believe this, next year, there will be some option, but everybody will be taking both portions next year. So we're going to get away from some of the piloting that happened this year.
They're going to have to wean off pretty quickly from the paper and pencil or pen.
I want to ask Dr. Pew.
I was thinking we had two years or three years.
Will there be a paper, pencil option at all? Either you or Mr. Akers, one of you two are testing gurus.
They allowed it last year because, and the district has to make a case for why. There was only one district new. Last year, we were totally.
Thank you. All right. Any additional questions or comments? Very good. Thank you so much. I appreciate you taking time to come and present.
So, thank you very much, guys. Thank you. I'm just going to just serve kind of an inside thing. For those of you who have worked here for some time, this young man's voice kind of favors Dr. Gladhill, does he not? Just your mannerism and speech, which is really kind of a, it's warm and inviting. Thank you. With that, I'm going to introduce Dr. Kehanek, who is our supervisor for school improvement, and Ms. Burkhardt, who is the coordinator of professional development and evaluation. They're going to spend some time with the Board talking about professional development in the district. And as most of you know, as board members, this is an important topic, not only to you as board members, but to all of our teachers whose time often is stretched. The most interesting thing, I think, in terms of timeliness is today, we had almost 1,700 teachers involved in professional development across the system. We have evaluations that we are now evaluating, taking a look at how this day went. But Dr. Kehanek and Ms. Burkhardt are going to share what we've learned over this year.
Good evening.
Good evening, President Breitman, Vice President Dr. Hardings, and board members. We're honored to come here today and speak in regards to the superintendent's goal. The goal we'll speak to today talks about the importance of high-quality professional development focused on cultural competence, inclusive practices, and working with students from impoverished backgrounds. We'd like to share with you that we have, in the last year, implemented multiple vehicles to facilitate and support professional development for the school system. The vehicles include, which we will speak to today in a little more depth, include district, Twitter modules, new teacher induction, supervising content specialist days, which Dr. Wilcox just referenced, collaborative planning opportunities for school systems across our county, and specifically teacher trainings and professional development. All of our professional development has been geared or framed around inquiries from staff members. We did feedback surveys. We continue to do them. Even our website offers the opportunity for any staff member in the system to attain and request professional development on any given topic at any given time, and we have been 100% responsive to any inquiry that has been posed. Our artifacts for completion, which we will share today, some are from survey feedback, focus groups, and interviews with employees. And we wanted to make it very clear that all of our professional development line to the Board's aspirational goals, and the school improvement plans this year, for the first time, were actually framed around those aspirational goals.
I have to tell you that I am so excited to be here tonight to talk about what teachers and administrators do here in Washington County, and I've also promised Dr. Michael that I will not talk for 80 minutes. So at this point, the slideshow will become also interactive. So if you have an iPad with you and you want to click on anything that you see in black, it will also take you to the webpages and to some of the advertisements that we have created, so that you can see what teachers see. Our first... Our first form of professional learning that we do here in Washington County are MSDE courses. And our MSDE courses come out three times a year. They're in August. We release these in August, December, and May. And this gives the teachers the opportunity to earn credits for their recertification. It offers them opportunities to learn about the framework. It offers opportunities to learn about the standards, many different opportunities. We also offer opportunities through MSDE and at the local schools, they can also develop inquiry groups. So if a school wants to study more in-depth about the standards, they can also create an inquiry group. This is some of the feedback and suggestions that we have received. We included here some feedback that we really liked and also some suggestions for improvement. A lot of times, you can see that this feedback will be, hey, can you offer this online class again and only offer it online? And then we will get some feedback that says, please don't offer that online. I would only like it face-to-face. So what we try to do is offer different modalities for having MSDE courses. These are just some of the evidence of implementation that we use. And this means that I could bring in artifacts right now that teachers have created through the MSDE courses that show what they're able to do, how it's changed their teaching practices, and most importantly, how it's changed student learning. We also have district professional learning right here. And again, I just want to highlight, look at those teachers who have been teaching. We, Mike and I cannot, or Dr. Kane and I cannot do every professional learning opportunity that's possible. We rely on teachers and the expertise of teachers, lead teachers and administrators to teach these classes. And again, here's some of our feedback and suggestions that we have. Teachers always have really good feedback about what they have been offered. And as you can see here, our latest, we are focusing on a lot of digital learning. We're focusing on a lot of curriculum. We are focusing on formative assessment. Again, this is the evidence of implementation, reflection. People don't change until they reflect on what they can do differently, what they can do better, how does it look in a classroom, how does it look with students? I'm very excited.
People are saying that you're close to halfway done, Joni.
He didn't.
Did he raise his hand in the back? Did he raise his hand in the back?
No, he didn't.
I'm very excited about the Twitter chats. In fact, we have a Twitter chat tonight, if you would like to be a part of it. It starts at 8:00 while we're doing this. And I really need to recognize four people here. And I want to recognize Carly Pumpfree, Dan Fowler, Chris Klein, Lindsay Reynolds. They really started the Twitter chats in August. We decided, hey, this is working so well, why don't we start doing this twice a month? And they have been very interactive. And what we have tried to do now is involve other people because the more people you have involved, the more ideas you have, the better student learning is. Again, some of the feedback and suggestions. We are taking the last suggestions right there. The introductions are lengthy. Whenever you have 50 people involved in a Twitter chat, it's very difficult to introduce everybody. So now we hook that in with questions. And we're also looking at ways, our Twitter chats happen from 8:00 to 9:00 o'clock at night. It becomes very difficult for people with small children. So we're now going to look at implementing one from 3:30 to 4:30 also. Again, just some evidence of implementation. We always ask for evidence of implementation because again, if you're using professional learning and you're not doing anything with it, even it might be the best speaker, you might be really excited about what you're doing. And if you're not using the professional learning, you're not making any difference in teaching practices and in student learning. So evidence is very important.
One of the other new platforms we have that we're really excited about is the modules. These are all created by Washington County Public School teachers, as you can see. And we've had some great success in viewing participation. And this, just only rolling the site in only two months, we've already had 1,936 access and over 500 videos watched. And I would encourage anyone in the room to go watch those videos. It speaks to kind of Mrs. Greenwald's piece about how our educators need to make, start grasping the same things we're asking students to do. And the videos are all done by teachers. They're less than five minutes per clip and are very specific to certain skill sets for operating, especially the digital learning. As you can see, our main three ones so far has been Google Classroom, Twitter, and iPad functionality. Have they been the three?
We're also very excited about our new teachers. And again, I just can't thank you enough for attending New Teacher Academy, coming to the picnics, coming to any of the events that we have sponsored with new teachers. We know in order to keep new teachers, we really need to focus on professional learning for new teachers. So every month, we expect our mentors to hold face-to-face or online professional learning. We also ask our lead teachers to be involved in this. We have had other trainings. We've had school-based learning, diffusing student behavior. And again, feedback and suggestions. New teachers always need to see what professional learning and what teaching looks like in action. Videotaping, looking deeply, consistently looking at how they're teaching. Again, just some evidence that we have and that they have developed. We did have a supervisor and content specialist day here today. This just talks about some of the summer PD. They had over 45 content-specific professional development sessions this summer. I know that they are looking forward to having more of those. The elementary task force meets once a month. The secondary task force is meeting. They're going to start something called the parallel task force. And this is when they're going to integrate history and English so that we can see a natural integration, math and science. And then we have collaborative planning. And I really like this collaborative planning. This is one of my favorite professional learning opportunities. I hear teachers, I talk with a lot of teachers, and I always hear them talk about, Joni, I don't have enough time. I wish I had more time. I'm a singleton in a school, and I need more time to work with other teachers collaboratively. We thought a lot about this, and we are now providing opportunities for teachers to work after school, to collaborate, to plan, and very importantly, to look at student work after they're finished. Right now, we have had an integrated chemistry and physics group. This has been very important to them because this was a new class that was developed this year. They have created resources. They have looked at student work. We have English 9 and 10 teachers. We have new teachers who are doing this. And I have these five groups coming up, starting in January. They've already started the work. Feedback and suggestions. They have some excellent feedback. I have attended two of their sessions. At their fourth session, I always go to the fourth session and run a focus group. And I say, tell me, what are you thinking? And they're like, can we have more time? And that's something that we always have to balance. Again, evidence of implementation, all teacher-created.
And the last professional development that we're offering is the lead teacher professional development. It is different for the elementary versus the secondary, as the secondary is currently in the curriculum development, where the elementary is currently analyzing the cornerstone tasks, which are more of a comprehensive assessment of student learning and ability to transfer their knowledge. We're also talking about School City, which I think really lays into what Ms. Greenwald had said earlier too about the importance of using online assessments. School City and Stride Academy do both of those. So the ability for students to give those capacities to work on online is definitely going to be something that grows. And these have been our initiatives from the beginning with Apex and Stride. To see where we're going next, obviously, we're making some gains towards the impoverished students. We actually had a team of teachers go and get training from the Jensen model for working with impoverished students. We will be offering those trainings in February at a localized office. We will be offering those trainings throughout the spring at school-based locations. In addition to that, we are going to support the professional development learning plan. That has been a huge focus already rolling. The media specialists and lead teachers are already engaged in that. We already have a plus 20-member cohort that is already going deep into the iPad functionality and applications. And last but not least is the professional learning for those two groups. And now it's your turn.
You're not timed, so you can take as long as you want.
No, I've been told I've got to have us out of here by 7:30 at the latest. No, just joking. Great report. Questions, comments for my colleagues? Mrs. Williams?
Yes. Looking at your next steps, I have some concern with regard to the professional learning opportunities with regard to supporting the digital learning plan. I'm hearing that teachers, while we have done our best to put iPads in the hands of students, I think we've overlooked being able to have an iPad in the hand of each teacher who will be instructing students and perhaps in the hands of those who are going to be providing the professional development to the teachers who are going to be teaching the students. And I'm wondering if there's been some kind of an assessment of how much it might cost for us to purchase iPads so that we can have this tool in the hands of our teachers. I think it's expecting a lot of a teacher not to have a device that's there for them to explore apps, to explore online resources, to be able to take that device home. I wouldn't want to see our teachers put in the position of, in order to be able to plan and teach their students and to do some collaboration with colleagues, that they would have to go out and buy a device on their own. So I'm wondering what plan there is for finding out how many additional devices we need and finding a source of revenue to cover the purchase of those devices. So where are we with regard to that?
So I will let you know that we are perusing that. We did, we are doing some assessment to see like, for example, what are teachers of record versus non-teachers of record? You know, for example, does a counselor need that practice device? Probably not, but a form of, you know, a classroom teacher would. We did hear that loud and clear, and we're looking at other options too to possibly consider. I haven't proposed those to Dr. Wilcox yet, but I did hear those voices and those concerns, and I plan to propose some suggestions or thoughts on that. I do know that the team had originally thought, especially with this initial deployment, that there was plenty of devices. And for the first part of the year, they're not going to a, per se, assigned to student or going to a classroom model because it's only going to be for April and May, and that those devices would be readily available to support teachers in learning. But I do, I hear your concern. Your concern has been echoed before. So, thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Mrs. Fisher? What Ms. Williams brought up, it kind of puzzles me. I thought the teachers wanted the air, the computer, the laptops, and now they want iPads instead? What was the?
In addition to, the laptops are really convenient. They work in a little bit higher depth language. For example, if you go onto Google Docs, the functionality of the laptop's significantly higher. And grade booking and all those things, they wanted the laptop. What we're hearing now is, or what we're seeing now, I believe, is that the disparity among teacher skill sets is pretty broad. Some people do not need the iPad nor are requesting the iPad, where some teachers who have never had an iPad are saying, wait a minute. They're two different applications, even though they're very much the same, they're the same iOS operating platform, the same platforms of operating. But a tablet versus a touchscreen is, I think, for some teachers who have never worked on a tablet platform at all, is giving them a little more reservations, and they would feel much more comfortable if they had that resource as well to take and play.
If their Apple laptops now are just primarily for doing grading and so on, what was wrong with the computers? They had to do that. Why didn't, well, I don't know, I just.
It's a consideration that's being proposed, but like I said, it varies from person to person. There's some people who are not saying they would want a laptop at all, but there are some people who say they prefer an iPad and a laptop. It was, the committee also had said that in the onset, that they wanted both. But I also know that if I asked every teacher in the system, they would say they want an Apple TV in their room too. They would want to be able to pair them with them. And I could just keep going down the list of the things I would know I would want. So it's just a matter of where we're going to draw the line and support.
I think part of our job too is to help them and to support them to feel comfortable so that they can use both the iPad and the MacBook. And if I need to, I can walk over. As a teacher, I've walked over in a class and just picked up the iPad and used it from a student or from an extra one that's right there. We'll create that comfortability through the professional learning and support. That's our goal.
I'd like to follow up with one. On the evidence of implementation that all the professional development and all the devices are absolutely wonderful unless, but if a teacher doesn't feel comfortable implementing it, we're sort of back at the beginning again. We haven't accomplished much. So my question, I know you mentioned artifacts, survey, feedback. At some point, will this be, this may be above your pay grade, but I'm looking at evaluations. I mean, how do we?
Yeah.
What's the endpoint here with professional development? How do we encourage this in a very defined way?
Right now, teachers do use the framework for teaching, which Domain 4 deals directly with professional responsibilities. And one of those areas asks teachers, how are you using the professional learning? And a lot of times, teachers will create a portfolio. They may have attended a professional development or professional learning session, and from that, they've created an implementation. They may have multiple artifacts that show, this is what I have used because of this learning, and this is how my students are now achieving. So a lot of times, either on paper, sometimes they will do it in, you know, in a notebook, sometimes they'll do it right there on the computer. So a lot of times, teachers are encouraged. Whenever I have a conversation with somebody and I say, how are you growing professionally? That's an important question to ask a teacher. And a lot of times, they use these artifacts that they have created through implementation.
To inform that.
Mrs. Breitman, I also think, I'd like to share with the board, and I will get it to Dr. Wilcox, the site that's being created, that has been created to guide the schools and the administration of the deployment plan. I think it answers a lot of those questions that you have in regards to some depth. It's very thorough. It does speak about instructional practices. It does talk about the Sandler model and go into that level. So I think that will be very insightful for the board members to see that and see what guidance we're providing schools, should you choose to see it.
I would appreciate that. Thank you. Dr. Wilcox, are you concluding?
Well, I have much to say, but I'm going to wait on some of it. I would like to answer your question though more directly. I think, you know, if you ask where we're going and, you know, will people use technology in this district and will the use of that be assessed? The answer is yes. I think it is our expectation in the 21st century that every teacher in this district will use technology where and when it's appropriate to teach their children. There will not be a classroom where a teacher would be able to say, I am not going to use technology. They may say, I'm not using it today. I don't think it's appropriate for this lesson. But during the course of the year, kids are going to have these experiences because that's what's going to carry them in the 21st century. And while we're very much going to be supportive and work hard to develop the skill sets of all of our teachers, we can't lose sight of the fact that these kids' future is going to be very different than our past. And so, you know, just earlier this evening, you saw that all of their assessments are moving towards a digital experience. That means that teachers are going to have to provide digital experiences for kids in terms of assessment. Once again, the teacher in the classroom is the artist. They're going to make this decision, and we're going to support them in that. But the expectation is that they'll be oriented towards providing experiences that benefit kids. I want to come back to one other. You know, we certainly are going to look at providing the appropriate tools for our classroom teachers, but I think it would be. classroom teachers, but I think it would be inappropriate for us to say, as an administration to this board, that every teacher should have both. Some teachers may want both, some teachers may need both, and we will get them both to the extent that we can financially get there. But we have worked very hard to move to one operating platform where the very same applications can exist in both environments. Might you interact with them a little bit differently? Yes. And some, you're going to use a keyboard, and some, you're going to use a touchscreen. But at the end of the day, the applications that we are picking for our young people will run, whether it's on your phone, whether it's on your iPad, or I don't have the device. And that's what we're trying to do for our young people and for the teachers who support them. So we'll talk more about some of these other great opportunities for teachers to learn. I think, you know, the great thing for me is, is that of our 1,800 or so classroom teachers, I will tell you, I very rarely run into a teacher who isn't excited about this initiative. Some have a little more trepidation because it's a change, and they're concerned about, you know, how they're going to be supported, but I think most of our teaching force knows that the day is here. The day is here. So now it's up to Mike and the team to make sure that they get the support that they need, and we'll work with you as a board to make sure that we fund the plan in a way that makes sense. And I think we have a sustainable funding model in place right now, so we're good.
Excellent. Mrs. Fisher?
I think I heard something that concerns me. I heard that teachers will be assessed on whether they're using devices or not, digital learning or not, and you also said that they have to decide when and where it's appropriate. When you put those two together, who's going to decide when and where it's appropriate? And what if the evaluator decides it was appropriate at that time, but the teacher decides it was not appropriate at that time, and yet they're being evaluated?
Well, I think that's kind of the nature of the world today, isn't it? Where there are differences of opinion, and people have to be collaborative and try to work to solutions that ultimately benefit students. In the case that you described, if, I think, the administrator clearly sees that other teachers in that school are getting to the same place using technology, and somebody's simply saying, well, I don't think it's appropriate here, there might be a consequence for that individual teacher that isn't as positive as perhaps we would like. But I think over time, those kind of things will work out. This is kind of, to some ways, some very new ground for people. I don't think those two things are mutually exclusive, but I do think they're something that is going to bear a lot of conversation, a lot of thought. The other thing I would say, you know, and I think, Mrs. Fisher, you, as well as some of the other board members who have the background of teachers, should know that we've moved from the kind of evaluation that was just summative in nature, where bang, 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 you're done, to something that's much more collaborative, much more informative. We are not out to get teachers. We've said that repeatedly, over and over again. Our evaluation systems today are much more collaborative. Now, are there times when, you know what, it's just not working, and we have to say that we're going to part ways, particularly with young teachers who perhaps haven't gained tenure yet? Yes, that does happen. But if you take a look at the Charlotte Danielson model, if you take a look at the domains, they are very oriented towards coaching for better performance, as opposed to, I got you, I caught you, now I'm going to fire you. And so that's why I'm comfortable saying that the evaluation process, even where there's a conflict, is not going to have that high-stakes consequence for the teacher that it might have had some years ago. Particularly when, you know, I think those of us who are teachers, we talked a while ago. I know that my evaluation was really based on a series of one or two observations, and then somebody checked out a one, two, three, or four, and you wanted fours, but if you just got ones and twos, you might not be there. So, different environment.
Additional comments? Thank you very much.
And you kept within the time limits, Joanie. Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Francisco. Personnel action.
Mrs. Brightman, Dr. Wilcox, members of the board, you have before you this evening several personnel actions, as discussed in closed session, for your review and approval.
Thank you. A motion, please.
Madam President, I move for the approval of personnel actions as recommended by staff.
Dr. Harding, the second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. All those in favor, please signify. Those abstaining, one. Seven zero, and student abstains. Thank you. Takes us to Board Member Committee reports. Ms. Greenwall, you want to start with student government?
Washington County Association of Student Councils met Tuesday, January 12th, at Springfield Middle. We'd like to thank Dr. Wilcox, Mr. Akers, and Mr. Haye for being in attendance. As I had previously mentioned, we formulated feedback from students on Naviance, and we are currently turning that into a presentation for Mr. Akers. If any of you would be interested in that presentation, I can forward it to you. Just please let me know. The date of our next GA will be released soon, so I will keep you informed.
Thank you. Mrs. Harshman, any reports at this point?
HR, Human Resources, will meet January 26th at 9:00 a.m. in the Washington Room. The agenda will be posted online, and will include an update on recruitment procedures.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams?
The Finance Committee will meet on Tuesday, January 26th, at noon. The agenda should come out via email to members of the committee, and will be posted online for the public. And we will be meeting upstairs on the third floor in the conference room.
Thank you. Mr. Gessford?
Thank you. Yes, the Facility Committee will be having their meeting at 7:45 a.m. on the 26th of January on the third floor. We invite all the public to come out.
Very good. Mrs. Fisher?
Policy Committee will also meet on the 26th of January. Our meeting time begins at 9:00 a.m., and we'll be meeting in the board meeting room.
Thank you. Mr. Ridenhour?
Yes. Excuse me. Curriculum Instruction will meet 10:45 on the 26th. We haven't picked a spot yet for that meeting. It will be posted, as will the agenda.
Thank you. Mabe Reports, Conference Committee. Ms. Williams, Ms. Harshman?
Nothing to report. I will report briefly on the Mabe Legislative Committee, just mainly on school construction, just an update on that. The allocation is predicted to be $314 million this year for the traditional CIP, school construction, $6.5 million for aging schools, and a $4.5 million for CUSAB. Dr. Lever, who is the head of the Inter-Agency School Construction Group, met with Mabe, the Legislative Committee, and there's a lot of discussion, as we're all aware of, of changing the standards, or at least revising, reviewing the standards in which we build our schools. And he brought up several issues. I'll just run through this briefly, and then I'll be sure that my colleagues receive a copy of this. The discussion right now is our schools are built to a 50-year standard, and there is discussion of looking at a possible 25-year standard. So what they're looking at is durability versus flexibility. So in other words, you may have the shell of a building, a school building, maybe more durable 50-year standards, where the interior walls, the finishes, the components might be more flexible, or 25-year standards. There's talk about a work group to hold comprehensive systemic review of a cost-benefit between these standards, also looking at life cycle costs, education specs. A lot of discussion that local standards and local education specs are driving the cost of school construction, and a discussion that the HVAC systems in new schools can cost as much as a third, or be as much as a third of the total cost of a school. So they're really going to drill down into the HVAC and see what they can do to try to value-engineer those systems. Some of the cost escalators, we all know that Frederick High School, some of the bids that went out recently were well over $115 million for a high school. Some of the cost escalators are looking at is school construction is usually a very tight timeline, and a lot of companies can't meet those timelines effectively. A lot of regulations and building codes are being looked at. Companies wanting more margin, profit margin, at the end of the job to reinvest in equipment in school construction often makes a very tight profit margin. Some plant capacities are down, plants that build or produce certain materials and parts that are in large demand for school construction. Some of those plants have closed down, and some of those materials are just not available in a timely manner. Some of the maintenance requirements, prevailing wage is something that has increased. Some school construction bids have gone up by 16%. I think Washington County has looked at an increase of about 11%. Also, the LEED certifications and the commissioning that is done on the building envelope has led to some increased cost. Some of the local fiscal constraints, some of the local school, as everyone knows, the state pays for about 72% of eligible cost, and the county picks up the remaining amount for school construction and systemic. Some counties are struggling with the economic reality or political reality of prudence versus no spending at all. Estimated cost to upgrade all schools statewide, if we were to just go after all of the schools that need it, would be $20 billion. So we would need to a minimum of $1 billion per year to catch up and maintain all the buildings throughout the state. And right now, back to my original sentence, we have $314 million set aside this year, is what the governor will be bringing forward. So I'll share that information. One other point is, we've had received a call to action on Senate Bill 71, which is a bill on the diabetes, taking care of students with diabetes. As we all know, local boards are committed to high standard of care for students, all of our students, particularly students with special needs and health issues and diabetes. Our concern is Senate Bill 71 is requesting that volunteers be brought forward and trained to give that sort of care to our students rather than a licensed nurse, and we're very concerned about the liability involved with that. And Mabe is opposing that, and will be developing, this has been discussed with this board before, and I know that Mr. Trotta is working on a position paper that'll be coming around to all of us. So that's something, one of the first bills that we feel we may want to give testimony or a position on. So any other questions on legislative matters that the committee can help anyone with? Okay. If there are no other reports to the board, looking at future agenda items, just a little heads up, it looks like board development for diversity training will be the morning of March 15th, the first two-hour segment of the diversity, as well as the sexual harassment module will be that day. And then the second two-hour module for diversity will be on April 19th. And those specific times will come out to you in your next agenda, so be looking for that. Coming forward, we'll be looking on February 2nd for curriculum and development and transfer goals. Also, some information on Every Student Succeeds Act, the new replacement or reauthorization of No Child Left Behind will come up. And of course, Mrs. Cade will be with us on February 2nd for a legislative briefing. Any questions on future agenda items, or recommendations, or suggestions? Okay, that takes us to Board Member Comment. Ms. Greenwall?
Nothing, thank you.
Mrs. Harshman?
Nothing.
Mrs. Williams?
I have nothing, thank you.
Dr. Harding?
Stay warm, and I hope everybody survives the snowpocalypse this weekend. My children were suggesting that Dr. Wilcox just cancel school for the whole week, and I told them, I assured them, all three of them, that we will have no snow days this year. So, he promised. Thank you.
I'm hoping for rain, but... Mr. Gessford?
I do not have anything tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher?
Nothing this evening.
Oh, my gosh, it's a quiet group tonight. Mr. Ridenhour? All right. Very good. Well, that brings us to the end of our agenda, and we are adjourned. Thank you.